We have a forum president and has been heavily posted regarding the rules for regulation of the state of Texas. Mr. Would you all be okay?
I certainly will. If everybody please bow your hands with me. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for all your blessings you have bestowed upon us and continue to shine your light. We ask that you watch over everyone as we finish school and begin to travel with loved ones this summer. Continue to show us mercy. Continue to strengthen us. Help us with wisdom and support in our decision making. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
And I think we have some celebrities gonna happen with our pledge.
We certainly do. Let me get to those right there. Alright, our first one is Aiden Raculia. He might be outside. Okay.
Hi.
What?
Yeah. Aiden and Tatum.
And Leah.
Yeah, Leah, uh huh.
It's not Aiden.
No.
What do they have more than this?
Yes. I would like to. Yes. I need to phone to you.
No, you can't. It's right there, I forget.
I know it.
Yeah. Are they chasing him now? I think they're all kinda in my eye.
Alright, one we have is Leah Mendoza. That's Leah here.
They're high up there. Entitled.
Are they out there as well? I don't know.
How are you?
Kinda go through their bio real quick. So Leah Mendoza, parent is Tammy Holsey. There she is. So she is a senior at Joshua High School. Her interests are and her hobbies are basketball, softball, nursing, lifeguarding, and spending time with friends and family. And... Is Tatum Moss out there? Nope, okay. Well Leah, you got it. You're gonna lead us through pledge. Yeah, right here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Joshua ISD will be a highly acclaimed model of education.
Recognitions.
Good. Now then, we're moving in. We moved the recognitions up because we have so many tonight. We want to let them be recognized and they can get on home and study for the finals. I know they're all, you can't wait to get on.
Alright, so tonight the first group we have is our varsity girls soccer team. So they'll make their ways in here. Our varsity girl soccer team is coached by Jeff Brooks, assisted by Will Walker and Jeremy Jackson. The Lady Al soccer team fought all kinds of adversity this year, graduating six starters from last year and 11 in the last two years, playing in the toughest girls soccer district in the state and having a lot of adverse results early in district. After sitting in seventh place at the halfway mark of the district, the Lady Als had a furious finish to the district slate, winning their last three games against teams near the top of the district. This included a 2-1, 2-1 win in overtime thriller in the playing game against a very good Mansfield Timberview team. With that win, the Lady Als secured their 15th consecutive playoff appearance. We obviously wished that the playoff stay had been longer, but so many lessons learned this year and Joshua has much to be proud of in the way these ladies just kept fighting. The life application is simple. As long as there is any hope, keep after it. So grateful for the chance to walk this season with this group and look forward to the future. Those ladies are Dana Clark, Kenley Miller, Avery Gortney, Kennedy Gortney, Maya Gutierrez, Abigail Miller, Cory Hunnell, Gracie Davis, Trinity Brown, Paula Sierra, Kaitlin Combs, Emma Freeman, Mariah Perez, Maddie Borzinkas, Cameron Tatum, and Kaitlin Rush. Right, I do this. Yeah, I got you. I know. Great job ladies.
Good job.
Alright, right now we're gonna allow Coach Brooks, since he has to go and coach our middle school soccer teams, we're gonna allow him to cover his athletic scorecard. So we'll turn it over to Coach Brooks.
With the girls, you've just kinda heard it, had a rough start to go to district, finished well, not graduating a ton, and have some folks coming up that are gonna help. So pretty excited about that. Also, I'm going to present for the boys as well. Chris Woodley is watching his daughter play right now. So the boys were in it until like the last district game was for the fourth seed and just fell short of the pretty good heritage team. But they're very similar to the girls. They graduate two good players, but they, their middle school numbers are unbelievable and had a lot of folks who are gonna come up and mention this about by the way. So both of us are pretty excited. We're very grateful for all you guys' support and that's all I got.
Thank you Coach. Alright, this next recognition will be for our Special Olympics. Our teachers and coaches, we've got Cinnamon Getty, Nicole Di Tomaso, and Chelsea Montanez. And we've got representatives from Loughlin Middle School and Joshua High School. We've got Ethan Spratley, who's a 7th grader at Loughlin Middle School, and we got Jackson Spratley, who's a 9th grader at Joshua High School, who competed in the official Special Olympics Track Meet hosted in Burleson on Friday, April 28th. Ethan competed in the softball throw and ran the 50-meter relay or 50-meter race, earning gold in both events. And Jackson competed in the standing long jump, earning gold, and ran the 100-meter, taking home a silver. This is our first experience competing at an official Special Olympics event. We plan to take several more student athletes next year. Let's give them a round of applause.
Don't come out tracking me.
We'll be there. Absolutely. I was just about to say that. We have our Better Together Track Meet on the 18th, May 18th. That's this Thursday, and it's from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. So if y'all got time, make plans to be there. We're gonna get... Good job y'all. Next group we're gonna recognize is our Joshua NJ ROTC Officer Staff for the 23 and 24 school year. Our NJ ROTC is led by Lieutenant Colonel Davidson and Master Chief Linville. Each April, Joshua NJ ROTC selects a new candidate officer staff for the upcoming school year. Candidates for selection undergo a competitive process, which looks at academics, physical fitness, conduct and citizenship, community service, and unit involvement. The unit's new commanding officer is Cadet Courtney Womack. Courtney Womack is a junior and honors student in all advanced placement curriculum. This past year, she single-handedly rebuilt the unarmed drill team, which took the unit to state. The unit's new executive officer is Cadet Garrett Weber. Cadet Weber is a junior and an honor student in all advanced placement curriculum. He is a member of the armed drill team and color guard. The unit's command master chief is Cadet Rowland Aguzzi. Cadet Aguzzi is an A student and a member of the armed drill team and the color guard. Cadet Aguzzi is also a standout on the Joshua High School cross-country team and was recently selected for the Daddilian Flight Scholarship, and I apologize if I butchered that, which will take him from the ground school through his solo flights. This unit's new administrative officer is Cadet Brooklyn Reams. Cadet Reams is an honors student in advanced placement curriculum. She is one of the top performing marksman on the unit's precision rifle team, representing Joshua at Navy Nationals in Sandy, Utah, All Service Nationals in Camp Perry, Ohio, and most recently at the National Junior Olympics in Colorado Springs, Colorado, where she scored higher than most of the NCAA athletes present. Our unit is blessed to have this kind of talent at the helm for the upcoming school year. Let's give them a round of applause.
Master Sergeant, I can turn them on up here. I'm gonna tell you what. We've got the greatest ROTC group in the state. It's because these two men and these girls, they go beyond, beyond. Love every minute of what they have to do. Say bye to them. We're not close to the man.
Thank you. Okay, our next recognition will be our Joshua FFA. Our teachers are Brandon Neal, Gillian Clark, Emily Sims, Ryan Perkins, and Haley Hoffman. Alright, Joshua FFA had eight teams qualified for state career development events. Intomology coached by Gillian Clark, team member Camille Peters, Abigail Bryant, Kylie Lyles, Breck Walker. Wool coached by Gillian Clark, team members are Macy Borisin, Ryland Bethel, Ellie Kinler, and Kendall Bethel. Vet Medicine coached by Haley Hoffman, team members are Morgan Hepler, Sydney Howgie, Hunter McKenzie, Cassidy Clancy. Horse coached by Brandon Neal, team members are Bentley Thurman, Maggie Eggleston, Michaela Baxter, and Ashlyn Johnson. Agronomy coached by Ryan Perkins, team members are Gracie Moore, Lexi Tucker, Myla Dibbig, and Gracie Nichols. Nursery Landscape coached by Enli Sims, Caroline Moffett, Grayson Bedecker, Ashley Duke, Emma Gerald, and then Forage coached by Ryan Perkins, Lexi Tucker, Gracie Moore, Alicia Collins, and McKenzie Monger. Livestock coached by Greg Clark, Kelly Blackwood, Keely Clark, Dakara Hempseth, and Tatum Byrd. Let's give them a round of applause. They're all recognized. Do the teams, there you go. Raider Mari. I had to... There you go. Happy birthday.
Notice that we had eight teams that went to state this year. That's the first time we've had that many teams to go to state. A reason for that is Clark come on up. Ms. Clark. We didn't even have teams to go to district until Ms. Clark got here. Very few went to district. She got here and took over the program in court, CT and LT. Program and has done a great job with there. We're losing her. She has audacity to go sit down with her colleagues. They grab its tail and its sock, but she aimed, did a great job. We hope to continue to do. Our quality instructor like this is why we have great programs that we have. We started to add, I gave her two pennies hoping she'd raise that. But she was, we're starting to miss you. Appreciate the job that you did.
Thank you. Okay, the next group is UIO Academics, Speech Debate, One Act Play, and Congress. And those teachers and coaches are Colin Yildin, Angela Fertig, Tabitha Lane, Celeste Zachary, Kenny Burr, Kami Yildin, Susan Gresham, Douglas Massey, Mike Nichols, Angela Nichols, John Gresham, and David Quarles. This group is being recognized for winning its sixth consecutive district championship in UIO Academics. Joshua won the District 85A Academic Meet with 508 points, beating second place Midlothian Heritage by 253 points. 21 of these students advanced the UIO Academic Meet at Texas Tech University. At Texas Tech, Raider Mari placed sixth in Current Issues and Events, and the Current Issues and Events team placed third overall. Jackson Dial plays first in Computer Science with a perfect score on his written tests. He will compete... He will compete for state on May 17th at the University of Texas at Austin.
Ask them to raise their hands so we can see who they are.
Yes, absolutely. So I'm gonna start. I'm gonna start with One Act Play, and then we'll roll into the next group as well. So One Act Play, we should have members RJ Brown, Kennedy Boren, Ava Justice, Jacob Youngblood, Reading Herr, Ava Miller, Jackson Dial, Jewel Bullard, Russell Hollins, Luke Coontz, Will Reed, Joseph Torres, Hope Flowers, Danielle Bernard, Cameron Campbell, Bryce Henson, and Gillian Guerrero. And those directors are Tabitha Lane and Angela Fertig. Alright. UIO Academic Roster. Addie Arguenez, Sarah Alvarez, Cole Anderson, Luke Breedlove, Joseph Buell, Clara Campbell, Gabrielle Cole, Jaden Cox, Logan Danton, Jackson Dial, Macy Dormody, Aiden Gresham, Bellin Hernandez, Arfin Hussain, Noah Johnson, Bree Latham, Logan LeBeau, Edith Leon, Roberto Martinez, Raider Mari, Caleb Michaud, Caroline Moffett, Sushanta Nupani, Falu Elajide, Nancy Palacios, Julia Pina, Alan Pisano, Reese Reynolds, Steven Rios, Chloe Rockwell, Brianna Schooler, Christine Smith, Nick Smith, Kaitlin Tyke, Will Vass, Shane Waits, Reagan Walker, Riley Watts, Courtney Womack, Jacob Wright, Tondeka Cabo, Lincoln Colehagen. Our Congress group, we have Diesel Keeling, Sierra Stilson, Raider Mari, and Elsie Mosqueta. CX Policy Debate, we have Jackson Dial, Cole Anderson, Ella Farrell, Falu Elajide, Maverick Thompson, Diesel Keeling. LD Debate, we have Caleb Sinkfield, Aiden Gresham, Brianna Blanco. Informative Speaking, we have Trinity Box, Jackson Dial, Nathaniel Houston. Persuasive Speaking, we have Cole Anderson, Shane Waits, Raider Mari. Poetry Interpretation, we have Isabella Martinez, Kaylee Yan, Luke Coontz, Russell Hollins. Prose Interpretation, we have Tondeka Cabo, Morgan Hepler, Cassidy Clancy, and Jason James. Let's give them all a big round of applause.
And again, you say another great group of young men and young ladies that do a great job with it. Their teachers brought them up through elementary, junior high. We expect us to have them every year and they come through. Looking back on the back wall and all those banners are first place banners. Middle school, high school, we've got nothing back. So great group of kids. This is the best part of the board meeting to be able to recognize and see. It warms my heart to see these type of kids doing such great work. It rejuvenates me because you hear all the bad news out in the world. And you look at the group we bring up here every week and you see nothing but good. So it really rejuvenates me every time. An old man's heart makes it younger.
I think we're gonna do the same thing with teams.
We're gonna do one act play.
Do one act play first?
Alright, we'll go one act play.
Looking for the sponsor.
Let's, UIO Academic Team, just do the whole, the whole, you wanna do the whole team? Okay. You can do Congress next. There you go, all debate. Awesome, awesome. You can do Informative Speaking?
Informative Speaking?
Oh, that's all, okay. Bring them in. Yeah, probably just do it all together. Come on, y'all come on in. Great job, y'all. Great job. How are you? Good to see you, thank you. So our next group we will recognize is our Joshua High School Varsity Softball Team. Our softball team is coached by Ashley Benson, Max Haskins, Adrian Haskins, and William Wells. And so the Joshua High School Softball Team got third place in 85A District and competed in the first round of the playoffs and ended up as Bi-District Finalists. Those players are Zaden Streeter, Tatum Moss, Landry Durham, Peyton Long, Bentley Lovell, Tori Bennett, Kaylee Conley, Colly White, Leah Mendoza, Taylor Profit, Bailey Jones, Kennedy Lay, Ren Vaunt, Ashton Stanton, Molly Young, Cheyenne Strawn, Aralyn Beaver, and Katie Amador. And the manager is Kenley Boland, and student trainers were Isabella Martinez and Riley Stapleton. Let's give them a round of applause. Squeeze in. I'm good. I'm good, I'm good. That was all the recognitions. That's all the recognitions.
That is all the recognition we have for tonight. We've still got some others that we're gonna recognize, may have to recognize them in the summer because we just have so many come up here in the last month. It's great to be able to recognize anything to be.
At this time, we'll move into the Superintendent Report.
Okay, with our Superintendent Reports and our Workshop Re- reviewed Enrollment Attendance, our ADA Report, our Child Nutrition Report, our Property Tax Collection, our Monthly Financial Reports, our Monthly and Year-to-Day Status of Special Revenue Funds, our Check Register, our Police Department Report, our Calendar Events, our Curriculum Department Updates, and at this time, we'll roll into our Spring Athletic Scorecards. First group is Basketball.
Boys Basketball, right here. Didn't really have the season we wanted to have. Kids worked really hard, got after it. We had a lot of injuries throughout the year and really couldn't count the ball like we should. We've been working really hard this spring about ball handling emphasis and lifting weights. We've been playing a lot, so we'll go play a lot this summer, so hopefully we get it going next year for the varsity and everybody. My freshman team, really excited about them. They went 17-8. It's probably the best freshman record we've had here in a while. And they got all the tools. They got eyes, they got speed, they can shoot it, they can handle it. And so I'm really excited about that group going forward. Ryan Puma will play on my varsity next year. So like I said, we're all getting together, playing together this, this summer and get ready to go next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach Hawke. Now we'll move into Baseball with Coach Shepard.
Probably one of the most proud, not the, not the best year we've had since I've been here, but probably one of the most proud I am of the group that I've had. This year, we weren't picked to be very good, we weren't picked to make the playoffs because we graduated eight starters the year before. But this group, man, they fought, they scratched, they clawed, and we ended up tied for fourth at the end of district and had to play again. And it didn't go our way, but just a heck of a group. See my JV, 12-11, and freshman, 9-12. Thank the freshmen, that is a big group. We had 20, I think 27 at one time. And so we headed bottom up, and so we had double headers on Monday nights. And so I had freshman A-Team and freshman B-Team, just to make sure that everybody got to play. But we were able to keep everybody in the program. And eight starters back next year could be good hits.
Thank you, Coach. Now we'll move into Girls Basketball with Coach Conley.
I'm sure you guys know how difficult our district was this year. So having a nine-team district makes it really, really difficult because trying to find one of those top four spots, and five teams in our district were ranked in the top 25 at some point in the preseason. I felt like we improved tremendously throughout the year. We beat Centennial this year, which that's the first time we've done that, and they've been in our district in the past, and we only lost to them by one in the first round. So I thought that was a good improvement. We're continually working and doing everything that we can to get these girls playing at a higher level. Every single player that's a sophomore through senior is playing AA and due this summer. So our level of play is going up, and they're really investing and putting time in the offseason. We always do Outbound, we do Leadership Training in the fall, we do Player, Player Conferences so that they know their strengths and weaknesses going into the next season. And then we also really do the cross-sport support. Like we really encourage girls to play other sports and be a women's high school athlete. So we're, we're working hard, we would like to see that improve. Our JV ended up third in that tough district, and it was really close between them and whoever was in second. Our freshman ended up being in yellow. And then our eighth grade group is coming up, one district. So we have a lot of things to be proud of going into next year. And I appreciate the board and all that they do to support our athletic career. So thank you.
Thank you, Coach Conley. Alright, Coach Benson with Softball.
Alright, so this year, our JV finished 19, 6-1 overall, and in District 12, 3-1, we had a very solid JV. We had two pitchers, which was really good for junior varsity. We ended up tying for second place on JV. Varsity finished 19 and 12, and in District 12 and 4. Beginning of District, we started off 6-0, which was very good. Going up, you know, against Centennial, we were both 6-0. We had a little bit of a fallout towards the end, but overall, I was very pleased with the way we played. We played quarter tournaments, we traveled to go find the competition because we want to be the best among the competition, and to do that, you gotta go find it. But overall, we had Pitcher of the Year in our district, that was our Junior Pitcher, Katie Amador. We had Zaden Streeter, Colly White, first team. Leah Mendoza and Cali Conley, second team. Our freshman, Landry Durham, was already mentioned. We had nine make academic all-district, and three of our seniors made academic all-state. So it was a very exciting year, and looking forward to next year, making sure we hit number one.
Alright. Alright, Coach Bethel with Track.
As Coach Conley said, you know, this is a pretty tough district. I don't know if y'all came to the District Track meeting, but it's like the SCC Junior College. For example, at the state meet held this past weekend, for the boys, seven events out of 17, either, yeah, seven out of the 17 events had people from our district medal. When you throw area in there, 12 of the 17 people, events were in the top three. For example, the 100 meters, our area took first, second, and third in state. For the girls, of our district, 10 of 17 events had people from our district medal, and 12 of the events out of our area. You look at it, there's a lot of red up there, I'm not gonna lie. Wasn't quite what we wanted this year. But with that being said, we have seven academic all-state seniors. At the district meet, we had 42% of our athletes set a PR or tie their PR personal record. For the boys, Greg Walker from the home lot was ranked number 18 in the 5A State, that's top 4%. In the shot put, Josh Johnson was 57th for State 5A, that's top 4%. He didn't even get to go to the area meet because he was fifth. You know, that's, we had three guys go 55 feet in shot put in our district. For the girls, Madeline Simeon, she was ranked number 14th in 5A State, that's top 4%. She was fifth in Region 1, and she's the third-ranked junior in the state of Texas. Kendall Bethel, 17th in State 5A, that's ranking, that's top 5%. She was fifth at the regional meet, and she's number, the third-ranked freshman in 5A State of Texas. In the high jump, Russell Bridges was ranked sixth, that's in the top 1%. In the state, 10th, ranked 10th in the entire state all-class protection. Peyton McCollum was number 19, that's top 3%, third-ranked junior in 5A. Jamie Paul, 67th in the 100, top 3%, 24th fastest senior in the state of Texas, and she doesn't qualify for the area meet in our district. You know, so it's, when you look at the red, you're like, oh, we're not very good. But when you look at the numbers and the times, and I can compare hundreds to hundreds, Jamie Paul would have won the district right to the west of us. She wouldn't qualify for the regional meet. So, yeah, I'm nitpicking, I'm trying to build our kids up, but I've got kids that think this year was a total disaster until I show them this. Hank, you're 67th, you're in the top 1% of state of Texas. So a little adjustment as far as the way we think mentally, as far as going into next year, we're gonna get thicker skin, and we're gonna continue to look.
Alright, thank you, Coach.
I think you need to talk to your athletic director, see if he can get you in another district.
Yeah, 19th versus the 17th to the rest of the state.
Yeah, it's crazy. Alright, Golf. Coach Jarman?
As you know, everybody's got a career talking about how tough the district is. With that being said, our varsity girls got second, varsity boys got fourth, JV girls first, and JV boys fourth. It was really tough to get out there and practice golf with all those kids, but I did the very best I could. No, Coach Wright and Coach Wright are down at the state tournament right now with a freshman golfer that we have, they qualified. I'm not sure if that's a record for first freshman that we've had go down there, but I think it may be. Our girls finished top three in seven out of nine tournaments this year. Kaylee Yon, the one, the young girl that's down there at the golf tournament this weekend, finished top five at a, I'm sorry, top three finishes in eight different tournaments. Tyler Gray hit a hole-in-one, which I don't know if anybody's ever been around a kid that's hit a hole-in-one, but we hit one. And then the freshman is down there, she shot a 74 today, and then they come back tomorrow and finish the tournament. So golf has been successful, it was a great year for us, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Coach. Alright, Coach Bryant, Powerlifting.
Thank you, Mr. Hickerson. First of all, we had over, in excess of 40 kids this year powerlifting, boys and girls. Had a lot of freshmen, with her including my daughter here, she was involved. It was a success for everybody because every kid got strong and every kid got beat. Past that, you know, at the regional level, we had 16 kids altogether qualify for regionals. That's really good. Many of them did very well. And in fact, let me go back, back to the over point that competed. And our two meets that we put on, we finished first as a team in one, second as a team in the other. Going back to the regional meet, the 16 that competed, every one of them did well. The girls went down to Elkin, the boys competed over here in Queens. After that came the state meet, which is a very big accomplishment, however, not easy to do. In the state meet, we had two girls, both sophomores, and they both placed. And on the boys' side, which is very difficult to qualify for, we had two boys, including Mr. Garvis, my grandson and brother. We also had another young man, Jacob Simkins, that was the 181 state champion. That is a fantastic accomplishment. So couldn't feel better about it, the numbers are gonna keep increasing, and how it was getting very, very popular for Joshua High.
Thank you, Coach. Swimming with Coach Gresham.
All right, for swim on the guy's side, we finished, I believe it was seventh. On the girls, it was eighth. On the guy's side, it was a drop-off because we had four, we lost four male swimmers last year for graduation. But for the regional meet, out of my four teams that swam at the district meet, nine of them swam at the regional meet. It's just, like everyone else said, it's a tough district. We swam, Donald swam two individual events. We have two guys relayed, and then I had a girl, so this one, one individual event, we had two girls relayed. Up from last year, Donald decided he wanted to swim two events at state this year instead of one. And so, at state in the Hunter Butterfly, he placed ninth. Between third and 10th place, it was all within the second. So, there's a whole lot of, it's super, super close. He ended up getting second-team all-state for the Hunter Butterfly, and he also swam the two of the crystal all-state state. Graduating two guys this year, so team next year, our guy's side is gonna be light. But the good thing is for our girls, I'm getting three incoming eighth graders that'll have experience, which is something that is really helping for this program. A lot of times with this program, I get first-year kids. And so, this year on our team, I'm graduating two, and I have one junior and the rest are sophomores. So, we never bring in ten relatively.
Thank you, Coach. All right, tennis. Coach Kesham.
We had a really good spring, placed in many tournaments, a lot of doubles. We had champion for consolation champion. We finished second, we finished third. One tournament, we played each other, so we had a first and a second there. We got the district, and on the varsity side, we had four qualify for the quarterfinals. Last year, that was one. So, I thought it was a fantastic tournament for the varsity. The JV, we had two qualify for the quarterfinals, and we had a district champion on the JV side with mixed doubles. They'd be centennial to win that district title. And every kid I had's coming back. We had zero seniors. One of the kids that won district in tennis, he started in October and caught up and did really well, was just a really good athlete. So, he was able to do a lot of good things for us in mixed doubles. So, really excited about what's ahead for them going into the future.
Thank you, Coach. Appreciate it. Okay, now we'll transition into our ROTC scorecard. Lieutenant Colonel?
Well, that's no longer unknown. We've just been notified that we are, again, a distinguished unit. We missed academic honors by one-half of 1%. So, that's gonna be a solid yellow right there. Almost there. For rifle, we were number one in state, number three in the Navy. That's out of 718 nationwide. And then, at the all-service nationals, we came in fifth. And then, this is the thing we're really proud of right here, and that was the drill teams. So, it's really difficult, even the area manager recognizes that it's kind of an either-or. You're either good at rifle, or you're good at orienteering, or you're good at drill. But we've had, our drill teams went to state this year, and we're very, very proud of that, with a top-five finish. And then, thanks to the community service store that was provided by the school board, we met our goal, 4,000 community service hours this year. We're also very, very proud of that. The kids, as far as the Navy Nationals, we probably shouldn't want it. You know, for those of you that have actually been on the range, the target that they're actually shooting at is smaller than the head of a pin. It's really tiny. Takes a great deal of discipline. It is an Olympic sport. Kids do it better than most of the kids they know all over the country for how well they shoot. But, you know, when it comes to the psychology of it, it's a little bit different than, you know, those of us that grew up playing football, you know, that's one of the charges, grab you, you know, shake you back and forth, and get out there and hit somebody, and try that with a lot of your d- 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 d-
We do several different suicide awareness projects. Our student council are really big on incorporating a positive message among all of our campuses. We use the Reach Council. Reach Council has a 10-week program with eighth grade. Now, down at our elementary schools, a lot of similar things within our elementary school, but our elementaries do a couple of different other things. For example, which I heard was a pretty good hit, was the social media roundtable and just trying to inform parents of all the different social media apps that are going on. And that's one of those things that came from that bullying, district-level bullying committee is just trying to inform parents so then they can have those conversations with their child at home. So we continue that process. We've had Stop Out Bullying Day, World Prevention Day, obviously our Red Ribbon Weeks, many different activities there just to try to inform our students and let them know that they have a safe place to come and speak to an administrator and when or if they are experiencing any type of bullying. As far as parent and community involvement, we'll be releasing, we obviously had our district-wide survey, but we're releasing our bullying survey this month. So that survey will go out probably in a week. And so we just kind of use that information, that collect that information and talk through that information during our Higher Heights Committee. A lot of good feedback in regards to that. We've had some of our campuses do those surveys as well. And then with some of these new measures in comparison to last year, our incident reports are down and our number of total bullying incidents are down in comparison to last year. And so very pleased with a bunch of those efforts, but you know, a lot of that starts with that campus administration and those teachers on that campus, you know, making sure that those kids have that avenue to report and have that avenue to speak to all those, to those individuals. And so very pleased with that. Any questions with that, guys? All right. Last superintendent report we reviewed was Extracurricular Handbook. We also reviewed the graduation information for the high school in New Horizons. And now I believe it's time for our campus presentation with Joshua High School. Ms. Neal.
Okay. So all of that that went on tonight explains our haggard look all past. It's a lot. But this conference is going to come out and present the photos tonight. And this is basically about awesome kids helping even more awesome kids. So to the back of my page now. Here's the page. So I have now gone on to teach Partners in PE two years now. So this is the second year. It's been a great class to teach this year. You're going to see it in the video. You're going to see that this class is a lot of fun. This class is a lot of our students' favorite class, favorite time of the day, just because of the relationships they've built this year. It teaches students skills in teamwork, workmanship, communication, and physical education. It has already grown this year compared to last year. I already have more students who have come up to want to be a part of Partners in PE next year. We would, and we would like to also thank Ryder, Mary, Myra. He created this video. He came for two weeks and was in the class with us filming, getting, I mean, footage after footage. It was awesome. We've done an Easter hunt. When it was Easter time, we have done, we've been working on the Special Olympics, jumping, running, and all these things and just backyard fun gigs. And you're going to see in the students' interviews that they have said how much of a difference it's been since the beginning, joining this class and being a part of this program and growing this program. So. Do you get those two lines? Okay. It's. Partners in PE class really shows the students that are involved, empathy, shows them positivity, shows celebrating the small things. Every small thing is a big thing. It brings laughter. It brings joy. Each time they come in the classroom, they're saying, okay, what are we doing today? I'm partners in PE. And they get down here and they have it set up and they're ready to go. And it's just, it's really amazing to watch, to witness. And these kids don't need a lot of direction. They take charge. They show ownership and pride in this class.
Partners in PE has my huge impact on my life because I have gotten to know each one of these kids individually and I've gotten to see their hearts. And you can just tell like they always want to be treated fairly and the same as everybody else. And being in this class gives me the opportunity to do that.
Partners in PE has impacted my life by giving me the opportunity to build relationships with these kids and spend time with them every day. It's also helped me grow in the way that I think about other people and it's given me more patience about every situation that I'm in.
My favorite memory in Partners in PE is the first day of school, whenever we first met the kids. And they didn't have much trust in us. And over the year, we, over the year, we've progressed and it's almost like we're best friends and every day just seeing them and making, putting a smile on my face.
All right. My favorite memory in Partners in PE is taking the kids out to the Bros and Friends Festival and just seeing their faces after they saw like all the bounce houses and games out there for them. It was just a really great time and getting to create like laughs and memories with them was just like an amazing experience. It just really worked hard.
It was important for me to be a partner this year because I think it gives you a lot of patience and you learn how to be patient with different personalities and different situations. And you get to learn a lot of new things and I just think it's a really cool experience.
It was important for me to be in Partners in PE this year because me and my brother Landon are both seniors this year. And it was really fun for me to have him in this class and be able to spend more time with him outside of home before I move off in August. And it was exciting for me to be able to be around more kids similar to him and different from him. And it was really great to be able to like make a connection there this year.
I would describe Partners in PE compared to any other electives at our high school as more engaging and more interactive. We get to interact with all these students every single day. We get to learn what they do, how they do things. And it just, it's really pure and I love just going in there every day and making nice interactions with everybody.
Partners in PE is one of the most fulfilling electives I've been in these past four years due to the fact that we get to personally connect with our own peers every day and get to know a little bit more about them every day that they walk into the gym. From playing basketball to playing horseware. It's just a wonderful experience that we get to be a part of.
Teaching Partners in PE has been such a great experience this year. It's life-changing for lots of the kids that are my partners. It's life-changing for myself. You start at the beginning of the year, not really getting to know anyone that's involved in the classroom and then the relationships that are built. And you can just see the enjoyment when the students are in the classroom, when my partners are interacting with the students and the games. It has been such a great experience and it's been so fun teaching it this year.
Great job, Ryder.
Great video. Very, very good.
Subject A. Subject A. Yep.
Okay. I believe we have a budget, a few budget amendments and purchase over $50,000. Rebecca.
Okay. So we have one budget amendment, which is just a small reclassification requested from the Curriculum Department. This is for a copier and office running to outbuilding two. The amount is $1,589, requested to be reclassified from Function 13 to Function 21. That is the only budget amendment. And then purchases over $50,000. We have three for equipment for proof of service, a purchase for kitchen equipment for campus cafeteria amount not to exceed $96,000. You will approve the vendor at a later agenda item. Some oven replacements not to exceed $54,000. Again, the vendor for that one is approved in a later agenda item. And a dishwasher replacement not to exceed $37,000, which actually is not over $50,000, but because this went through an R and P, we're having you approve this video. Also, we'll approve that vendor in a later agenda item. And then the last one is AC units to be replaced. This is for Joshua High School and Staples. The amount is $205,920 and the vendor is preferred mechanical.
Thank you, Ms. Mesker. So my recommendation would approve consent items as discussed.
I hear a motion. Motion by Ms. Pruitt. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cody Lee. Any further discussion or question? All in favor? Seven of them. All right. Now, Subject B, consider and take action on the order canvassing the returns of a general school board election held in the district on May 6, 2023. And at this time, I want to point a group of three to canvass the votes and then come back and report what y'all discovered. And those three are going to be Myra, Kevin, and Mr. Lawson.
All right.
We had to send three this year because we had a lot of votes and they don't have many fingers and toes.
[laughing] My recommendation is certify the results of the May 6, 2023 School Board trustee election.
I hear a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Hunter Burr. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cody Lee. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor? Seven of them.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
We're going to move forward and do better than what we've done in the past. That's all that. So this election means that we're moving forward. Subject C, issue certificates of Lexin Minister of Office of Office to newly elected board members.
You want me to just, you want to sit here and?
We got to sign that first, don't we?
Video, then I'll.
Yes.
Thank you.
This is a big matter.
Okay. Okay. I state your name, you solemnly swear.
I'm Ron Galbert. Sowmous word.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute, you use of office and.
Job, doctor. The State of Texas. And will do the best of my ability.
And will do the best of my ability.
Protect and defend. The Constitution of the House. The United States. Let me stand up, take up this stage. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I tried to trick him there.
He dropped.
And my third. I guess I'm going to turn it over on the subject B over to you.
All right. So the board has to reorganize, reorganization occurs each year after newly board members are elected. So those board members will elect a president, vice president, secretary to serve until the next election.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Galbert as president.
I second that.
Those, those all in favor? All right. Now we need to do vice president. Do I hear a nomination?
I make a motion when we nominate my vote.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Do I hear a nomination for secretary?
I nominate Jean Laufman.
I'll second.
All in favor? Seven of them.
Or six of them.
Yeah. I know, six of them. Corrected myself. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to serve a great group of people. This is certainly a great group to work for our school. They're very, they're very student-oriented. And they get everything for the best of the school and mine. You didn't even let me make a speech while ago when I was president.
My fault. I should have turned it over, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on, moving on to Subject B.
Mm-hmm.
I'm going back to the book.
You jumping all over the place.
I want to turn it up.
There it is.
Subject A, consider all educational service center region 11 contracts for the 22, 23, 24 school year.
Okay. So we reviewed this in our workshop and this is just basically contracts that we review annually. And these contracts are from Region 11. They include things like instructional services, on-data suite, superintendent and board member training, technology services. We added Teaks Bank. So my recommendation is approve the Region 11 2023-2024 contracts.
Motion by Ms. Pruitt. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lawson. Any further discussion or question? All in favor? Seven of them. So F, consider student insurance proposal for the 23, 24 school year.
Another housekeeping item here. We normally, every year, bring this proposal to you guys to approve our student insurance proposal. And this is just supplement, supplemental insurance can be used as that first line of insurance if parents have no insurance at all. Three different companies we got quotes from. Texas Kids First, who we currently use and have been using for quite a while, The Brokerage Store, and then Student Insurance Plan. And because of the familiarity and knowing which providers accept the plan, my recommendation would be to approve the Texas Kids First Lone Star III as a student insurance provider for the 23, 24 school year.
Motion.
I move to approve agenda item F as presented.
Motion by Mr. Lawson. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Hunter. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor? Seven of them. Subject D, consider JISD appraisal calendar and procedures for the 23, 24 school year.
Okay. Another item that you guys approve annually. And this is just our appraisal calendar. We use T-test for our appraisal process. And so you're just approving that calendar with those updated dates as far as our procedures didn't change in regards to this school year. So my recommendation would be to approve the JISD appraisal calendar and procedures for the 23, 24 school year.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Kevin, Mr. Kevin Lee. Do I hear a second? Second, Cody Lee. Any further discussion or question? All in favor? Seven of them. Subject H, consider resolution of the board regarding hazardous traffic conditions.
So annually, we had dropped, adopt the resolution to identify those hazardous road conditions within two miles of a certain campus. Those campuses are Cattle Grove Elementary, Eldo Elementary, North Joshua Elementary, Plum Creek Elementary, Staples Elementary, Laughlin Middle School, and Nichols Middle School. And those are just areas that don't have a sidewalk or just hazardous conditions where it's a main foreign-to-market road such as 917. And so my recommendation is approve the revised resolution of the. And so my recommendation is approve the revised resolution of the board regarding the hazardous traffic conditions.
Okay. I make a motion, we approve the resolution.
Motion by Ms. Drewitt, I hear second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Wilson. Any further discussion or question? All in favor? Seven oh. Subject G. Consider approving certification for cybersecurity training.
Okay, so each year, in accordance with board policy, CQB legal, we have to, our cybersecurity coordinator and elected official of school board trustees shall complete that cybersecurity training annually. And so we're just certifying that you guys have completed that state certified cybersecurity training program. So my recommendation is to approve the certification for the cybersecurity training for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
I hear motion.
I move we approve agenda item I as stated.
Motion by Mr. Laufman, I hear second.
Second.
Second by. By Mr. Kennedy. Any further discussion or question? All in favor? Subject J, consider revisions to compensation plan.
Okay, so we had some items and some changes as far as title positions within our compensation plan. And so what we're doing is we're not adding any new positions in regards to these positions within our compensation plan, but because of auditing purposes, we have to keep that, those positions in there until we adopt the new compensation plan in August. And so these revisions right here will help us as far as going forward and then certainly help us hire staff that we're needing to hire. So my recommendation is to approve the revisions to the twenty-two, twenty-three compensation plan.
I hear motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Hunter.
Second.
Second by Ms. Drewitt. Any further discussion or question? All in favor? Seven oh. Subject K, consider approving Principles of Exercise Science and Wellness.
So we discussed these next three subject items in our workshop in regards to adding these courses within our CTE program allows the possibility of earning industry-based certification, that certification being a certified personal trainer, and just adds the addition of electives for our course offerings at the high school. And so the first course is the Principles of Exercise Science and Wellness course. And so my recommendation is to approve the Principles of Exercise Science and Wellness, PMS code N one-three-zero-two-one-zero-seven to allow students to receive state credit.
Subject E.
Motion by Ms. Drewitt, I hear second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Laufman. Any further discussion or question? All in favor? Seven oh. Subject L, consider approving Kinesiology One.
Okay, so this is just a continuation of what we just talked about. This course actually goes a little bit deeper. Kinesiology One will dive into the body mechanics, psychological function of the muscles and the movements. And so in order to continue with that pathway in order in that industry-based certification, my recommendation would be to approve Kinesiology One, PMS code N one-three, N three-zero-two-one-zero-four to allow students to receive state credit.
I hear motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Cody Lee, I hear second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Wilson. Any further discussion or question? All in favor? Seven oh. Subject M, consider approving Kinesiology Two.
And this is the last course of that pathway. And so this is Kinesiology Two. So my recommendation would be to approve Kinesiology Two, PMS code N one-three-zero-two-one-two-four to allow students to receive state credit.
Okay.
I hear motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Hunter Burr, I hear second.
Second.
Second, by Mr. Cody Lee. Any further discussion or question? All in favor? Seven oh. Subject N, consider changing board meeting dates for August twenty-twenty-three, November twenty-twenty-three, January twenty-twenty-four, and March twenty-twenty-four.
Okay, we discussed this in our workshop, and we need to move our dates in August. Moving our date in August from August twenty-first to August fourteenth will allow us to publish the proposed tax rate and vote on that proposed tax rate within that time requirement. Then the meeting in November actually falls while we're on break. And so moving that up to that Monday before, so movement it from November twentieth to November thirteenth. And then January, our Christmas break extends into that first week into January. And so we would be returning, it would fall, our meeting falls on that first Monday following that two-week break. So we'd move that date back to the twenty-second of January from the fifteenth and in the March. Same thing what we do every year since we return off the spring break. Instead of coming right back into the meeting, we push that back a week to March twenty-fifth. So my recommendation does approve the school board meeting date changes.
I move we approve the change in board meeting dates as presented.
Motion by Mr. Laufman, I hear second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kennedy. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor? Seven oh. Subject G, consider request for proposals, RFP twenty-twenty-three zero-one, complexion and combo firm oven replacement.
Okay, so Rebecca and Candace discussed this within our workshop, looking at purchasing new equipment for some of our equipment within our, around our campuses. You have the evaluation summary. And so my recommendation would be approve strategic equipment, DBA ISI Commercial Refrigeration LLC for campus oven replacements.
Okay, I hear motion. Motion by Ms. Drewitt, I hear second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cody Lee. Any further discussion or question? All in favor? Seven oh. Subject P, consider request for proposals, RFP twenty-twenty-three zero-two, kitchen equipment.
Okay, same thing. So we talked about the RFP and the evaluation summary during that workshop. And so this is in regards to kitchen equipment. And so my recommendation would be approve the Douglas Food Stores Incorporated for heated cabinets and milk coolers.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy.
Second.
Second by Ms. Drewitt. Any further discussion or question? All in favor? Seven oh. Okay. Subject Q, consider request for proposals, RFP twenty-twenty-three zero-three, dishwasher replacement.
All right, the last piece of equipment is the dishwasher replacement for Child Nutrition Department. And so we reviewed that evaluation summary during our workshop. And so my recommendation is to approve strategic equipment, DBA ISI Commercial Refrigeration LLC for dishwasher replacement.
Okay, I hear motion.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Laufman, I hear second. Second by Mr. Burr. Under Burr. Any further discussion or question? All in favor? Seven oh.
That's it. That's it.
Okay. At this time, the open session of the meeting will adjourn. The board will convene in a closed session to discuss items authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Governor's Code, Texas five-five-one zero-zero-one through five-five-one zero-eight.
What are you talking about?
Time is eight oh six.
Yes, so the board reviewed the list of retirements and resignations and approved them. Also, I'd like to recommend the board to approve Dario Urban as Assistant Principal at Joshua High School.
So may.
Motion by Ms. Ruth, your second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lofman. Any further discussion, our question. You sure nobody will work with him?[1704.22][1704.22](laughter) All favor. So may.
Welcome in.
He's going to get up.
I guess I got another recommendation.[1718.86][1718.86](laughter) I'd like to recommend we approve Toby Cox as Executive Director of Student Services.
Your motion.
So may.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ruth, second by Mr. Cody Lee. Any further discussion, our question. I read the vote. And they taking brain.
I'll take my second back.[1755.74][1755.74](laughter)
All favor.
Oh.
I want you to know how excited we were to do that.[1771.26][1771.26](laughter)
I expected for Mr. Galloway to say no.[1774.18][1774.18](laughter)
I didn't have anything to do with it.
Kevin mentioned it. His idea.
Anything else?
That's it.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second by Ms. Ruth to adjourn, second by Mr. Cody Lee. Any further discussion? All favor, stand up.
Yes.[1793.66][1793.66](applause) Thank you all.